I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Need approval of minutes on the fire department, police department, treasurer, engineer, code office, public works, and planning.
I'm sorry. Do your roll call first.
Persing, teacher, Kramer, Rechner, Henry, Ister.
I'd like approval of minutes and reports of the fire department, police department, treasurer, engineer, code office, public works, and planning.
Ister?
Yes.
Persing?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Any audience comment on any specific agenda items as listed? Alright, we're gonna, well, there's no redevelopment authority report since the meeting this week, they canceled last week or two weeks ago, it's meeting this week. Now we're gonna put the meeting on hold and turn it over to Dan for the CDBG public meeting.
Thank you. Circulate in the sign-in sheet if that makes its way to you, if you sign that please. Tonight I'm here in presence of the 2016 CDBG entitlement application for the city of Sunbury. We're preparing the application. On June 27th, we've reviewed the projects submitted, proposals submitted, and approved the projects. The total allocation for 2016 for the city of Sunbury is $272,958. The projects selected were Chestnut Street Utilities Reconstruction Phase Two, which was allocated $220,328. The city of Sunbury Fire Department put in a proposal, was approved for a hose washer in the amount of $12,500. And then administration for the CDBG program is $40,130. So that again pulls out to the full allocation of $272,958. Following the hearing, we'll ask the council to approve a resolution, a resolution to apply if approved reflects the city's approval of the projects described and reflected in the three-year community plan. The resolution authorizes CEDOCOG to prepare and submit on behalf of the city the 2016 CDBG program application and authorizes Mayor Persing on behalf of the city to sign the resolution. And I believe the resolution has been provided. Welcome any comments at this point.
The administration fee that goes to CEDOCOG?
Yes.
That's it for the, alright, there's no discussion or anything, we're just going to pass the resolution to apply. You got a motion and a second?
Persing?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Thank you.
Simple as that, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your work here. Anybody here MSRI, I ask all slates here, I don't want Megan to make a mistake.
Just wanted to give everyone the update that we held the Albright Elevator Ritten Cutting this week, so that was great, thank you Jay for coming to that, we appreciate it. And I think it was very positive, it's a huge landmark, the building is now handicap accessible, so that allows us to be able to hold many more functions there. And we now prepare to refurbish the lower levels to have that, be able to welcome people hopefully within the next year. As far as the events, we have a ton of events coming up over the next few months. The next one is River Festival and I'll let you talk about that in one second. At the beginning of, until end of August, we'll still have the the next, the third and final movie of the summer, which is Rio Two on August 23rd. Also on August 23rd, Radiance, Holistic, and Center and Academy will be hosting a virtual mixer, so it's gonna be a busy night. And then September 10th is the Renaissance Festival and September 17th is Lake Festival One, Blue Festival, and tickets are already on sale for that. And then the most upcoming thing is Blue Festival, Hall of Fame.
Well, we're ready, we're gonna be. We have everything all set, we had the the tryouts for the Top Scott Talent Friday night, we have 16 candidates set to go. We have a new judge this year, I'd go along with Francis, Tom Webb, Ellen Boyer, and then now we have Linda Schlegel Culver as a judge. Our emcee is Nikki Crye from Channel 16. And then Friday at noon, Mark Lawrence and I are going to, each of us board a cardboard boat, have a little race on the river at 12 noon to sort of kick off the vendors, so if you want to see something funny, that'd be that. I can't swim, so I'm alright, I'm okay.
Okay.
And then Friday night, we have Jesse and Eric Rockham on even one of seven, and Saturday, a lot of vendors, a lot of food, a lot of, a lot of entertainment. And then we have the Blue Festival After Hours, Saturday nights with a boat parade. The after hours is a Guns N' Roses tribute band, they have fireworks, and we have, the opening band is Halo. So we're looking forward to a good time and hopefully we'll have great weather.
Ashley?
Yes.
One question. We were discussing some stuff first tonight, it was mentioned that there's going to be vendors in Cameron Park? Do we have that many vendors at the
No, we're not gonna be in Cameron Park, no vendors.
Okay.
All the vendors will be along the front street.
Then, okay.
The only thing about Cameron Park would be the music on end of the evening.
That's what my question was, if we had that many vendors, I mean, how would the traffic pattern
That'd be great if we had that many vendors, but, no, all the vendors will be along the front street.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thanks for all the hard work and that, Ashley, everybody knows how that's all involved, I do want to mention Albright, because I know there was, it was a good turnout there, I thought Megan for that, but that's one of those secret projects a lot of people aren't aware of, and I know you guys are doing a great job in that. Down the road, that's gonna be a huge, huge impact for our community, so thank you for everything you're doing and continue to do that. Nothing else, SRI? New business, Board of Health, Rick?
Okay, we've had a situation with the home, I guess it's been long before I was in office, but we finally got to the point where we're gonna start taking action on it. I don't know how much, I'll just read you the paragraph, the property located at 519 West District is posted to July 26, 2016, for unsafe human autopsy or use due to lack of water and very unsanitary conditions throughout the interior of the structure. There's also been other numerous code violations ongoing, everybody's been going on since August of 2011. So I'm here tonight, I guess, to make a motion that we as the Board of Health condemn the property at 519 West District.
Questions?
Why did it take so long? Couldn't tell you. Well, you guys are in charge.
Is that a fire? No?
No, 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 it's just, it's just been ongoing since 2011, and the last episode was about a week ago or so, and we talked to Joe and I asked if the water was, I believe the water was shut off, so I said we need to act on it and condemn it.
Mike, explain that gentleman, wasn't set idle since 2011, explain that.
Mr. Snyder hasn't set idle since 2011. The problem is, the house is owned by an individual from the problem. And it's an estate, where she owned the property, however, in the, in the estate, the sister was able to stay there until, of course, her expiry. Fortunately, she moved out to another, another area where it's better living conditions. We've been dealing with this since 2011, with no water, no electricity, large degree of insanitary conditions. State of disrepair of the property. Every time we'd go back, it would be cleaned up, the electric would be back on, the water would be back on. Property would be repaired to the point where it can be lived in. 7/27, we were there with the other agencies. And we went into the residence again, and it was right back to the state where it was. This would be a third time that we were there. Under our city ordinance, three strikes and you're out, this is our third strike. But places already in placid, unfit, we came to habitation, and we developed it in 2015, if I look at the notes correctly. Yes, 9/14/15. Unfortunately, we had found that one of the occupants that was residing there is still residing there. And she refuses to give up, places where she needs to go, she can't even take this step. So that's what we had to do.
You can't physically remove someone like that in a property that's condemned?
No, no, we've been citing her, she's had many citations.
So how many citations can you give a person before you can take that action?
Well, I believe, I believe she's up to four, the city ordinance says three violations, or three, three responses to the problem. So this, this was our third major, we've been there multiple times.
I was just gonna say, you said that this has been a voided property for some time, so five years, and then she's only been cited three or four times. So you've only went back like once a year and checked to make sure that the property's running and
Everything we love.
But you knew it was a voided property. See, I think that when you know it's a voided property, you should be returning more frequently, I think?
Well, can you say it?
Just to say, hey, we're keeping an eye on you.
I said finish it, because incorrect the problems correct, that's no longer a voided property.
It's no longer a voided property at that time.
That's correct.
But you also know that they already have issues, and this is an ongoing thing. Why are you not then saying, I mean, can you put something in a plan or something saying, okay, listen, we already know you guys are having, you know, you're giving us issues? We're gonna keep coming back and keeping an eye on you. Because listen, as a landlord, we gotta do that with our tenants, if we know a tenant isn't keeping their property up to the way it should be, we go back over and over and over and keep an eye on them.
But Mrs. Betts, you also have to understand, this was partially under occupied. It's harder for us to do on an owner occupied that is around.
So if their owner occupied, you can't, you can't cite them, you can't?
It's just, it's just, it's just hard. We can get administrative search warrants, and the police departments helped us in the past with those. But we didn't need to go that route.
It sounds like that's something we might need to consider in this town, though, if we have that many people who are owning the properties and letting them go to that extent.
This, this, this is an unusual situation, this is a unique situation, that's why, seriously, I know you're reaching your nose right there, however, you know, you know, I really don't want to go into detail according to you. But it's, it's a very unique situation why we're here now and not today. That's where I want to go with that.
Right. Is the property rehabilable?
To be honest with you, Miss Brosius, until it is cleaned out, you know, that's, that's gonna be hard to determine until it's actually cleaned out and it's set.
Well, because what I'm thinking of is the, the home on East Anatomy where the cat issue was, apparently that was rehabilable, because there's somebody in it.
Right.
They've gutted it. So instead of making another parking lot, my point is, what do you make more with tax, a parking lot or a home?
Oh, I agree 100%. However, from this point, you know, if, if city council, acting as Board of Health condemns the property, it automatically turns over redevelopment, and then we can start the legal process of taking that property over through the legal process to the city. And at that point, then we can start cleaning and evaluating the property to see if it's fit to be renovated or not.
Well, as I said, the property on East Anatomy that had the cat issue and apparently had the garbage issue was sold, and I don't know who the property owner is now, but it was rehabbed, so.
And that's our goal, is to do everyone the best we can, they don't get thrown down unless destruction is unfit.
Right, and that's, and that's why I answer, I cannot give you an answer, an honest answer, until it's cleaned out and see what the physical damage is to the floors or the floor, because you came
Who determines that, my dear, or who determines what
Yeah, us, a third party, inspector comes with us, and we do a, we do a evaluation, and we give that report then.
Okay. So is it the third party that does this that doesn't have a conflict of interest with the city?
I'm sorry.
So the third party that does the inspection?
Right.
Do they not have a conflict of interest with the city?
No, because they're contracted with the city to, to assist us with these situations and to do the building inspections.
Okay, so they are contracted, they're not actually an outside?
No, they're contracted with the city of Sunbury to do, to do exactly what
And depending, depending on the, how the funds are, what funds are being used, with those engineers
You know, for example, Mr. Green, CDBG, you know, with those demo properties, there, there was a whole engineering survey done on the property, the whole nine yards, so. It's just not, it's just not two guys making a decision, it's, there's a large group that's making a decision if the property needs to be tore down.
Well, that was my question, thank you, because it wasn't obvious, thank you.
I'm gonna have a motion, you'll be able to leave in a second?
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Approval of the pay invoices, Beth isn't here, I have general fund of $36,014.68 and liquid fuel of $10,236.40. Can you second?
Second.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Persing?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
I don't see a tack is on, do you have a tack is on? No tack is on, or you should list it there. Any audience comment? Yes, ma'am?
Actually, I don't have pictures, I'm gonna show you, can I show you?
Yes, you can. We have a name for them.
Yes, Deborah Beth, I'm gonna give this up to the ma'am, just in case they want to see him too. You know, I think this is an ongoing issue we have in Sunbury, which is, you know, people having a hard time keeping up with their lawns and, and the trash in people's backyards. But I've been driving around thinking, when are these people gonna start cutting their, trimming their sidewalks, you know? And I wanted to just show you some of these pictures that I have. Oh, that don't look too bad, right? What about that one, do you think those weeds are a pain in? You can't because of the picture, how about this, can you see that three-foot weed?
Yeah.
Almost to the sign there where it says one way? Yeah, see that one? How about this one, that's open, it's gotta be at least five, six, right, because I'm five-two and it's taller than me.
It is taller than you. That's a big weed.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying, look, and just in case that looks magical there, there's the sign there, see how tall that weed is? You can keep passing them. I just want to know, is this acceptable to our town? I mean, are we okay, are we complacent with people growing a terrain, I mean, it looks like a hillbilly terrarium in our curves? I mean, I see more weeds in there than I do, you know, anywhere else, and they're yours. Then there's plants, and people's yards, right? Keep passing them. And what's this sign, has you seen this guy's house here? It's a, it doesn't have all the bells and whistles, but he keeps it clean. And I happened to solicit this guy one time, and this is an 80-year-old man who lives in this house. And if he can pull his stinkin' weeds out of his curves and his sidewalks, I think anybody else can do, look how nice he keeps that, an 80-year-old man.
Yeah, but maybe he's healthy.
Well, he may be healthy, but you know what, there's other alternatives, you yourself don't have to get out and pull weeds. There are, there are resources in this town.
Well, why are you concerned about somebody else's property?
I'm concerned because it's devaluing everyone else's property around that area. It is devaluing my property, Donna Swollen has a property that she cools her weeds, and it's beautiful flowers. This whole section has went out of their way, Bob Lawderman, Joey, all this, Judy Stigl, they planted these beautiful gardens, they keep them up, and then you turn around and you see crap two blocks away, because people are letting their weeds grow this high? It's a concern. Look at that sidewalk, isn't that nasty? Don't you even think that's Oh, here's, here's the hillbilly terrarium here, terrarium, see that, all them weeds out? You can't even see the curb, because there's so many weeds in that curb. I know these are my neighbors, their house is spotless, but let me tell you what, you go two houses up, and the neighbors have it so plugged up, you can't even walk down the sidewalk.
I'll just get on the brick, because those guys will be out looking for the sidewalk.
Okay, well, so you all agree, these are pretty nasty, right? Do you guys, do you all see these pictures? Show me the picture, right? This isn't just on one street, this is all over. Here's a plugged house, beautiful house, let me show you the picture.
Well, it's Rick's, tonight will be doing the house, so give him the rec.
Okay, well, I get Mayor, that you don't like hearing this, but we've had to put up with it for a pretty long time, so I think I have a little bit of time to speak.
This is what we want, is just saying, give the pictures, the rec is his department, that's my call.
Well, then listen, Rick, let me ask you, whose responsibility is it on Chestnut? Who's setting this precedent, right here, for these weeds to grow to this extent, okay? Because we can't tell these people not to do it if our own state isn't keeping up.
That's his own Chestnut Street?
Yeah, all the way down.
So I look back Chestnut Street to me, it looks like it might be Market Street.
I'm sorry, it's Wolverton, Wolverton, it's Wolverton, that cute little patch, you know, where you guys just redid. It would have been so much nicer if we just put rock in there instead of plants, because if we don't have the people to maintain. But the side, okay, this is beautiful, too, look at this beautiful garden we have going across the bridge right there, the island, you know what I'm talking about, people? But this is what you gotta look at before you get to that.
I think there, that's the
Well, it wouldn't hurt us to
Well, I'm just saying, that's, that's
Well, these are all your copies, because I want you to remember this, and I want you to remember too, that we have resources that we can be reaching out to people. There's the Girl Scouts, we have the Boy Scouts, we have the kid club in our school, these kids are all doing volunteer work, they get patches for it. They get, they get rewarded for, for participating and bonding with their community. So you wouldn't just be doing all of us a service, you would be doing those kids a service by helping them bond with their community in which they live in. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Well, how can we get from grass to bonding?
Because, well, you're not getting attention there, because it's really simple, honestly. Pride. Pride. But not only that, when, you know, my husband used to come home all the time and say, I feel like a guest in my own home, I feel like a guest in my own home, and I'd say, go on the lawn, take out the trash, you feel a part of the family, guess what? It's the same with this town, you don't cater to them, you give them responsibility to it, and they will bond to it, and that's what I'm talking about.
I agree with you.
Well, you're asking me, so tell me.
I think we need to start citing work before
I agree. If you need volunteer work, I'll help you do that, I'll be there, I will do it. I will collect people in our neighborhoods, and I will give them pitch, give them, to give you pictures and, and addresses. And if you need me to help with paperwork, I'll do that, because I know they're over there, but we've gotta stop
8:06.
It's 8:50, 14:02.
14:02, when you're out or door?
8:50, 14:02.
No, no, when, when do you open about in the morning?
I'm up at 7:00 in the morning. You do that.
Can I say this?
You know, this isn't to be sarcastic, this is a real problem we have in the community. So if you're gonna call me at 7:00 in the morning just to be a smart idiot, you know, it's not gonna work for me, but if you're gonna call me and say, hey, listen, we really do need your help, this, that's, I'll do it.
This house here with that cracked sidewalk, I've been up with him twice now, he's fighting with the gentleman who put the sidewalk up, he is trying to get that
Well, listen, that wasn't the point, the point is, is that's an elderly gentleman who, who keeps that property spotless, it doesn't have bells and whistles. It's not, you know, he doesn't have the prettiest house in the block, but he has the cleanest.
But, okay, with the sidewalk, he's trying to get the contractor to come back and fix that.
Well, that's fine, I mean, I'm not worried about it, you know, fixing everything takes money, pulling weeds costs you nothing, nothing. Let's make it cost them something if they don't pull them weeds. Because if it's about the online dollar, and they don't want to fix up their houses because they don't want to spend their money, make them pull their weeds in it, they don't make them pay for it.
I agree, if you pull hard, you don't have to, anyway, you're not getting attention to get your pocket.
So then do it. Yep.
And I, I've been trying for two years.
Then do it. And if you're gonna set up a meeting and get me involved, I'll help you. And that's all I gotta say.
Thank you.
I can add to that.
Yes, ma'am?
Another comment, I want to let Shu say, if we have a 20-acre plot in our neighborhood that, the weeds are higher than the fence, pavement fence. And you know what property I'm talking about?
Salatex.
Salatex. Now, they did, they did, somebody did go up and cut the weeds on North Second Street Extension, all the way out to a stop sign, you probably see the stop sign.
325 Chestnut Street.
Suspect having
Repeatedly, here, 2014, I've been writing letters, but who won that? About this property.
Just got here this week.
Hold on a second. That was a phone call that was made to county, and they did take care of it, but we have 20-acre field expense, then you can't get in there and say maybe we as a city can save the county, you need to put it, please, I'm a little
Not special on the fence line.
Right down here?
Any other audience comment?
Would you, would you, you know, like, we had really bad weeds, and I couldn't do it, and he couldn't do it, and you had to wait till somebody had time to do it, even when we hired him?
Right.
Would we be fine for that?
Well, the goal is, if that happens, you know, the goal is don't have to sit there for two weeks, that type of stuff, starts growing, just try to find somebody.
There's ways you can do that too, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if you pull the weeds and put salt in there, you won't get them back the rest of the summer. So you pay somebody, you come one time.
If you have elderly people that can't pull them, then I guess just call them and say, oh, we'll see if we can't find somebody. Do it that way. I have a discussion with you of parking meter replacement project, Mrs. Snyder, Bob, does he, Bob here?
Yeah. Yeah.
You brought up about some parking situation, we, we put a committee together, and we're looking at, I'm actually looking at parking meters. And by looking at parking meters, and maybe different parking meters, we're looking at places that really need parking meters, and maybe to eliminate some of that type of stuff, so. Anyway, I'm just reporting that Kevin, Todd, Terry, myself are looking into that, and we'll come up, and hopefully we'll come up with a recommendation next meeting or two. The announcements, music in the park, August night, Sunbury City Game at 7:00, August 16th, Willie D and Rosie, August 23rd, Timothy Burton, at 6:30 to 8:00. SRI Valley's Got Talent, Ashley brought that up, let me remind you, that's Thursday, August 18th. If you've never gone to that, it is an amazing, amazing evening, it really is, it's just, it's unbelievable. I know you guys watch that stuff on TV, that America's Got Talent or something, but I'm telling you, there's clearly, there's people that show up at this that could easily be in that on television, it's, it really is, it's an amazing turnout, so if you have, if you have that evening off, I would highly recommend you go down and take a look at that. Summer River Festival again, August 18th and 20th. And the new thing on the 25th is the reenactment of Insieme in Bloody Springs on Memorial Drive at 1:30. We're gonna have like, Leach, how's that? Can we set that up? For your own larger, again. We can't tell you that. It sounds, it sounds pretty exciting, you know, with that, with that structure, I think it's gonna be pretty neat. I, I just, I'm just sitting off here, I believe you're sitting there, how are we gonna divide that up? Oh, yeah. Yes, ma'am?
Sorry, you missed my, my, all the debate was going on about the property and stuff, what. Rick, I was just curious, maybe two weeks ago, one of your staff was up on North Second Street taking photographs of the industrial property?
Yep.
And weeds?
Yep.
Was that a grass?
As far as I know, it was, I mean, I don't know about the other properties, but I do know that Mr. Moran was contacted, was that contacted personally, totally? I think that. Okay.
And the other thing is, the older siding on homes, could we possibly agree that there's probably asbestos in that type of siding? That's been on there probably longer than you and I?
Well, some I would say so, but some I would, I don't know, asbestos siding is pretty hard stuff.
Yes.
And I, I don't know that there's anything that's illegal about having that on your home, once you do, what, you're suggesting you gotta remove it properly?
Right, but I'm getting to a point here. The children that I think are loved but they're not watched that live next door, and I mentioned this, that same day to your staff, that one, we were in the alley there. Has ripped some of that siding off. And then they placed it against the base of the home, and was throwing bricks at it, and it was like going all over the place, as it was being broken, you know, with the wind and whatnot. And their grass has not been cut, nor has the trimming of the weeds done in the parking area in the rear, nor in the yard.
Any addresses?
844 S and M.
Rick, I just wanted to ask one more time, whose responsibility is it then for that patch there on Wolverton?
Mine.
Oh, is it yours?
Personally, but the city's responsible.
Right, so you'll call me
Right. So you'll call me, and we, we can get together, maybe about somebody that ...
Yeah, 831, 730, Harrisburg. What I'd like to do is set up a committee. You had said about the Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, and even the Democrats.
Key Club.
Key Club. To pull them, because the stones you mentioned, they're coming from Central Doors.
Oh, are we putting stone in there then?
Well, once we pull the weeds, we'll put the geotech down, and then the stones. The stones are gonna look just like they did at Burger King in Sunoco.
Right.
The River Biscuits, that's on the agenda. But if you can give me the help to get them out of there, I have the geotech already purchased.
So what, can I ask you, when we put that in there, did we not think through who was gonna maintain it up until now?
What had happened was, it was originally designed, the hill section put mulch in there for appearance. Of course, you seen what happened. Last year, we came through and took all the mulch out. We've dug now, I think it's down five inches. That was prepped to do what we're gonna do, put the geotech down and then put the stone down. That will solve about ninety percent of our issue. And it will look nice. One of the concerns, and you had a good point, anytime you have rocks and children, they have a tendency to throw them.
Yes.
So that's why they stay away from that. But now it's gotten, as you can see, out of control. So that's where we're at. But if you can get help, clean that up.
The heat of the summer hasn't helped, and there's a lot of ...
No, and it's true, but weeds always grow better than our crops.
Yes.
But by the same token, it must all form it out. And Central Doors have been contacted to bring trucks to load down a stone. And we're gonna start using more and more stone through the city and mulch, not on Market Street, but other locations, some parking lot areas, because of the hassle of maintaining it. But ...
Now, what about on Front Street there? You also see, like, it was quite a ways in there our summer that I noticed that there were still a lot of weeds in the bushes and all that. And I'm wondering, are we, are we just like mulching and taking care of this stuff before the River Fest or before a baseball game or whatever? I just wanna know, because I think it needs to look nice for us before we start making it nice for somebody else.
I appreciate what you said, but we've worked on it all summer. They were down there all day today. Six guys, well, five and I think, ten is there, a woman. Well, yeah, they've been working on Front Street. We've been pulling out the dead sherbet. We're bringing, on the south end, the sherbet's been dying off. We tried three different replacements, the salt in the winters that we get into them. So we're shortening up the stretch from Market North, the sherbet does very good, down into, even around the high-rise, it does good. So we're shortening that stretch up to the ice cream parlor. We're gonna shorten it up, so we're taking the good ones that have left, moving them up to the upper end, north end. So that's what we've been doing lately, and we do the mulch in, not be mulched again. But what happens is you just get so overwhelmed. And of course, then we do have some summer help. But I have two full-time employees, plus part-timers. It's, it's the stretch. When you mentioned help, well, we'll sit down, if you can start putting it together, we'll provide the bags, the gloves, whatever we need to clean that. And once it's cleaned, then we'll put the geotech down fairly easy. Take person who's got the geotech, lift, put it down, bring the stones in. And a lot of those dudes have fun doing it.
Absolutely. But we can also get our, our, the neighbors that live down there would probably really love to see it. So if we can get flyers out for the neighbors that are